Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley, Alderman R. Wesley, Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor police.
Here, I declare a quorum present, please stand, join pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for a former alderman of Wooddale and community leader, fireman, very active, Mr. Roy Sei, if we could just take a moment of silence. Okay. First, approval of city council minutes of December 21st, 2017.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard this evening on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay. Written communiques, I do have a couple of written communiques. One, members of the city council, I'm writing to recognize the holiday spirit of the Wooddale Police Department. I am director of Carefree Daycare, 116 West Irving Park, on December 21st. Ms. Schultz gave me gift cards to be given to three of our families in need at the center. The families that I selected were ones truly in need. When I handed them the gift cards, the parents with the explanation, they were from the police department. I actually had one mother cry. Very special thank you to Eileen, Chief Vesta, and all the members of the police department, from the parents and myself, Ms. Joan Bieske. Next, dear Mr. Mayor, congrats on the 50th anniversary, but 2018 can be just as good. I have a suggestion. Wooddale should have an annual pet competition where fish are allowed in fish pools. Please, Mr. Mayor, it's a good idea, trust me, have it for one year, and if you like it, do it next year. My neighbor has two huskies, five fish, one frog, and so much more. They would love this, from Claudia Seigen.
I second that motion.
Actually, we're sending her a letter, and I told her that the council would consider it, and we would put it to the special events committee.
I'll take it.
To do some type of, I know at one time was a discussion about pet parades and things like that, so. Next, I have a letter from the historical society. I'd like to thank the council and the people of Wooddale for your continued support of Wooddale Historical Society and yesterday's farm museum. Over the years, we have been working more closely with you and the city of Wooddale during numerous events. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve the citizens of Wooddale. In the past, the city has helped to support a number of programs that the Wooddale Historical Society has brought to the community. Due to your support and generous cooperation, we have been able to continue to provide such programs as our conversation with Ceres, Flea Market, Harvest Fest, Ghost Stories in the Barn, school district programs, Holiday on the Farm, and service programs for high school and college students. These programs have been provided to the community for many years, but not only to our own community. We have had people participate in our events from other towns in other states as well, and from other states. We have welcomed guests from the local hotels to join in the festivities when they are in town. I'm sure that you know that many people traveling through town enjoy the event information that is placed at all local hotels. These events, whether they are city, park, district, library, or historical society, continue to draw people to visit our city year after year. I'm writing for your continued support from the Wooddale Historical Society programs and events. I have sent the request also to Mr. Murmas for funds totaling $6,500. These funds are directly related to our continued ability to provide a higher caliber programming to our community, and your support allows us to remain available to the community. I would also like to request an additional $5,000 to help with our window expenses. I thank all the members of our city council that come and support our events, and I would also like to encourage any other members to come and participate in events up on the farm. Please consider becoming a member of the historical society. This eventually will come to the budget. Okay, that takes care of written communiques. Next, under mayor's report, we have the letter from the bandits that everybody heard and saw, I think it's just right after Christmas, and you guys wanted to know, they went to Florida, I believe they said early December is when they went. Alderman Sizbarski.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for, make a $500 donation to.
Second.
Tony, second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Brad, you'll take care of that. Next. We have a proclamation commemorating School Choice Week 2018, whereas all children of the city of Wooddale should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the city of Wooddale recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the community to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Wooddale, and whereas the city of Wooddale is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children, whereas educational variety not only helps diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, I, Mayor, enunciate to police to here recognize January 21st through 27th, 2018, as School Choice Week in the city of Wooddale, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. And this evening, we have Dr. Michelle Wilkins from Child's Voice right here in Wooddale. Would like to say a few words, if you could please go to the podium, Dr. Michelle.
So, of course, as every teacher has, I have handouts.
We have to wait till you go, because we're being recorded. We need you, sorry. Otherwise, the residents get upset when they can't.
I'm also not good at standing in one place, so this is going to be hard. But, as every good teacher has, some handouts here and some displays that hopefully we'll be able to have you participate and take pictures of, first for Wooddale, but also for Child's Voice. I am Dr. Michelle Wilkins. I am the executive director of Child's Voice School, and we have participated in National School Choice for many, many years. Child's Voice is a school that provides quality education, has quality teachers for many of the children here in Wooddale who are deaf and hard of hearing. So although the choice typically is not made by parents that have a deaf child to make a choice of schools, we do provide that service for Wooddale and many communities surrounding. And we thank Wooddale to partner with Child's Voice. You've been excellent partners on all levels of the community to support Child's Voice. So National School Choice is the ability to give parents a say in their child's education. And we know those that graduate from Child's Voice and are back in your community schools receive an excellent, excellent education here. So we're very excited to partner with you and to be very much part of your community. We attend your galas, you attend our galas, it's a wonderful working relationship. So on behalf of National School Choice, there's many activities that take place. You're all welcome to come to Child's Voice all next week. Might be sports day, so wear your sports. It might be your spirit day, crazy socks, wild hair. I mean, it would be kind of fun if you came and worked with the children at the school, and you are all invited to do so. What we'd like to do, though, is present these scarves, and if it is okay to wear them and display them and take some pictures, okay?
Sure.
Great, all right, I'm going to pass those on.
Yeah, right then.
So we have one for everyone, please. It is beautiful. It is the brightest scarf you will probably ever hold. You will not be messed, and you're very soft. And I'm going to also have you hold this side.
Look at that timing.
And I do have extras if you all would definitely like to take a piece of scarf too. And actually, with this sweater here.
I'll get a picture.
Yeah. You want us to stand here, you want us to be close? Should we get in front?
Yeah, that would be great.
Sure.
All right.
You guys are getting crazy with. Bat in the back. Topping your back.
Yeah.
There we go.
Go ahead, he's going to take some first.
Okay, one, two, three.
We'll do a couple more, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
You want to go up there?
I took three.
How nice.
All right. Now, how do we get audience of that?
No, like, don't move, because now we're going to do a video, okay? And you're going to say, "We support School Choice as community partners," okay? Yeah, I don't know. Well, now, the first thing is, is.
We support.
We support the New York Choice.
School Choice.
One more time, doctor, what's the line?
We support School Choice as community partners. All right, alternative video. No, wait. How'd you get everybody in? There we go.
We support School Choice as community partners.
Yeah. All right, that's perfect.
You're my attorney for the world.
All these good ones, maybe you're able to display that, that would be excellent.
The timing was impeccable, right? Peter looks like he's going to like a golf club or something. Going to like a country club.
I'll send more over to you.
Better not see you drying your car with that, Brad. Better not see you drying that car, your car with this.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Mayor, before you leave, if you haven't done it already, I highly suggest that staff and the alderman here take a tour of Child's Voice if they haven't been there. It's a very, very nice job they do, very great kids.
And Mike will tell you as well, when you walk in, the kids are like, you know, yeah, they will hug your kid, so be sure you're in the right clothes, just peanut butter or soccer. I so appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I have one more item under mayor's report. You may have received the email today. DMMC is going to have about three to four videos. The first one, it's DMMC issues at hand, it's on our website. It's regarding permanent property tax freeze. You may get questions from the residents, you may want to look at it, just went up. So, if you guys have any questions, ask me, I can give you more detail, but what's, this is the first one of probably three or four videos, and they're trying to choose mayors from different regions into page on each video, so. Just to give you guys a heads up, in case you get asked by any questions by the residents.
Want to mention the objective, or?
Just educating the residents on what's going on in Springfield, on some of the stuff they hear, and they're not hearing the entire story, so they're trying to give a synopsis. Okay, that concludes my report. Let the minutes reflect, Alderman Wesley here, Roy Wesley?
Here?
Yes. Next, city manager's report.
Yes, two items. Would like to remind residents that our 2018 special events calendar slash posters are being released in the next few weeks, and it'll highlight all the wonderful events that the city has to offer. You should see it at all local businesses and other public places around town. Second item, like to remind the council that the public works building study will be distributed in the manager's report tomorrow, and staff is working to schedule a special workshop later this spring to talk more about all things public works, facilities, and possibilities. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda, if no objections, we have four items on the consent agenda. Do I entertain a motion?
I make the motion. Second.
Okay. And there was no objection to the be any hands. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
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 Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
You didn't notice he's not wearing a yellow scarf, that's why.
No, no, right. All right, next, I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of final payment request to misfit constructions for the street name pole installation project in amount not to exceed $21,600. Item number two, approval of change order number one and two with RW Dunhaman for the Potter Street beautification project to reduce the contract from $307,761.40 to $248,538.30. Item number three, approval of final payment request to RW Dunhaman for the Potter Street beautification in an amount not to exceed $6,000. Item number four, resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Landmark Sign Group for a city sign project in the not to exceed amount of $69,848. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley. Just say yes.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Just say yes, right?
Yes.
And that passes, and Alderman Eugene Wesley is in, as well, at 7:52. Okay. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Woods.
More report, Mayor.
Thank you, public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino.
One report, Mayor, and a comment. Resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Bradford Systems for the women's locker room renovation in the not to exceed amount of $10,207.73, and that is my motion.
Second.
What?
Second, Peter.
I just heard two people.
Peter was first. Sorry, Randy. Roll call. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
And I got something to say. As far as the ethics committee, we're not going to do it tonight. I'll reserve my time for another evening, or perhaps in the exec session. I'd just like to go over on the ethics committee. Obviously, the freedom of speech is granted to all of us Americans through the First Amendment. However, I would like to have a little bit of a conversation with all of us on this council to get a better understanding of ethics, manners, and etiquette.
All right. I'll leave that to Mr. Bond and Mr. Murmas to work that out.
Okay, thank you. It's the end of my report, Mayor.
As a future item, right?
Future item, yes, sir.
Okay. No problem. Next, public works committee, Alderman Sizbarski.
Mayor, I have three.
Okay.
First, I have approval of partial payment request, number five, to ALAMP concrete contractors for the Ward Two Phase Three Forest View project in the not to exceed amount of $46,136.24. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, and that passes.
Second, I have a report and recommendation for the approval of partial payment request, number one, to ALAMP concrete contractors for the Ash Avenue Quiet Zone improvements in the not to exceed, in the amount not to exceed $27,267.52. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion, we have, Randy was the second. Any questions on this one?
I have one question.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, yes.
Is there any left on this, or is it the final payout?
Mr. York.
Yes, this is a partial payment, there's approximately $15,000 left on the contract.
I'm good.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Third and final, I have approval of change order from the Front Street, or from, sorry, from the street sign installation project with misfits construction in the amount of $4,960 for the installation of additional poles. That is my motion.
Second.
Second. Motion, a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, finance and administration, Alderman Port Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Messina. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob.
I just want to give the complaints for August and September, which is the last ones I have. In August, we had 64,756 complaints, of which 38,123 people complained. September was 65,324, of which it was 38,363 that complained. Appreciate everybody doing that, and I ask that people continue to do so. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Messina, have a comment on that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I don't know, do you want to talk about the CAPTCHA, or you want me to talk about that?
If you want.
Yeah, just for folks watching at home, if you are filing a complaint, there is a new got, CAPTCHA computer thing, make sure you're not a robot, so just make sure you go through that process, or we'll not log your complaint. The telephone complaint line is still live and active.
Okay, thank you. Next, Stormwater, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mayor, I have one request that came out of the meeting last night. They are asking to put aside in our budget for $50,000 for, until we reach the goal to do the flood study that is needed to give us a better CRS rating. That is what came out of the Stormwater meeting last night.
Yeah, that'll be a budget item?
Right.
And I believe we're going to have discussions on that as well.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it, Mayor.
All right, the managers making the note. All right, next, approval of list of bills.
Two reports, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The first is a list of bills dated January 4th, 2018, in the amount of $311,775.66. And.
And this, their motion?
And that would be my motion.
Second.
Alderman Catalano.
And the second.
Wait, wait, let me, let me get the questions first.
Okay, sorry.
Any questions on this one? Alderman, Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Acres Group Watering New Plants.
You have a page, Matt, I take it this one's going to be yours?
Page one.
Okay, that's simple enough. Go ahead, Mr.
$300?
Yes.
Go ahead. Acres.
What are the waters? Read the bill again, I didn't quite hear it.
Acres, Acres Group Watering New Plantings.
Uh huh.
What new plantings, and when?
I'd have to look at the bill to make sure, but it's our tree plantings from the spring. This has been an ongoing cost that we've had with them since the spring, and I believe this is through October.
So, in our.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, in our contract, the tree plantings that we planted, or the tree plantings that we have the contractor plant?
Mr. York.
The tree plantings that we have the contractor plant, we do not plant any trees.
So.
Go ahead, Mr. Wesley.
There are no, there is no watering in the planting of the tree contract.
Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
So my next question is, why?
Mr. York.
Why is there no watering? Their watering is a separate project cost. So to plant a tree is a one-time thing. We can either water it ourselves, or we can hire an outside outfit like Acres to come and do the watering. This year, we decided that for the last, excuse me, for the last several years, we've had Acres come in and water all the trees to make sure that they live through the, through their initial growing season.
Mr. Biden has a comment.
Yeah, the tree, the watering, the contract is for tree planting. The scope of the contract is to have the trees properly installed. We do have, if they don't take, we've got some recourse against the company that planted them.